Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Mesa City Council Session for June the 21st. Mr. Glover is out of town on a city assignment. Everyone else is present. The first item on our agenda is to convene an executive session to interview and consider the city magistrate candidates. Is there a motion to convene an executive session? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We will come back into this room after that executive session is over and continue with the meeting. Thank you. Just had another very impressive experience interviewing three candidates that are extremely qualified for this position, any one of whom would be a tremendous addition to the Mesa Municipal Court. So, to each of you, thank you very much. You couldn't be more impressed with each one of you, and all did very, very well during the interview process. Would anyone like to make a comment about the outcome of, or the consensus? Yes, please. Yeah, we just need to provide direction, I think, at this point, so that a name can be put on the agenda for Monday's council meeting.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and forward the name of Alicia Lawler to be appointed municipal judge for City of Mesa.
Great. Thank you. Is that the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Ms. Lawler, and to Ms. Mendez and Harris again. Can't tell you again how impressed we were. We encourage you to please continue. Hopefully, we'll have openings in the future that you can compete for, but we, everyone did very, very well during this process, and congratulations. The next item on our agenda is item 3A, and that's to hear a presentation and provide direction on the proposed audit plan for the next fiscal year. Ms. Rutman, good to have you with us.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council. First opportunity, as you know, once a year, we come to you and ask for you to approve an audit plan for the coming fiscal year, which basically lays out everything that our office does for the year, whether it be audits, follow-up reviews, and investigations, other things that we do. It's all laid out in the audit plan for your approval. And then periodically throughout the year, we frequently have minor changes to that as things come up and requests get made by the city manager or by you to change that. But in general, this is what is going to be our plan for the year. So what we want to do is make sure that we get your input on that and make sure we're doing what it is that you want us to do in accordance with our charter. And so the things that we want to talk about as our work are the work in progress, new audits, follow-up reviews, and the other activities. I'm going to jump through these really quick, in the interest of time here. So if you have questions, just stop me. I tend to talk fast. Okay. So, arts and culture, these are the things we're currently working on. Arts and culture has agreements with nonprofit support organizations. We're looking at all of those. There's three currently, the relationships with the city. And so the other is the Dobson Ranch Golf Course and Restaurant Contracts. There's a contract that is expiring. Both of those contracts expire next year, and the department asked for us to take a look and see, to look at what they might want to do moving forward with the new contract. Whoops, didn't quite finish. And so procurement card program, that's citywide, looking at all the departments and how they use procurement cards and what the controls are and whether we're, it's a compliance review as well as internal controls review. Eastmark CFD, that's more of a financial review to see whether the money coming in and out with regard to that community facilities district is what it should be. Pretty straightforward. And the transportation contract monitoring follow-up review, which we're in the middle of, and that's going well at the moment. And so, new audits or carryovers are the ones that are listed. And so, the three carryovers are the purchasing procurement processes, and I've been corrected that development services, not development and sustainability, is the department. And we're going to be looking at their fees and charges for, to see whether things are being charged in accordance with the schedule of fees and charges, and also whether they are accurate in terms of what's being assessed. And so, the other is the claims administration contract, which we put off for a year. We've actually put off twice now because of the changes that have happened in that contract, and now with yet another new provider. We feel like there's been enough activity once the first year has been completed, so maybe start of 2019, we'll start looking at that contract so that we'll have something to review. And the same would be said for the next one on the list, which is the police jail services contract. And that is, as you know, something that has garnered a lot of interest, and therefore we had several people request, that we just take a look at that. Now, the police department has been doing quite a bit of tracking and reporting on the results of that service and how it's going, and has provided updates as part of their budget process. However, we would just be conducting an independent review to see whether the information that you're being given is complete and accurate and has, is meeting your needs as far as what you want to know about that contract, and whether the service provider is complying with the contract. And so, other things that we plan to look at this year are utilities metering processes, which is something we haven't looked at before, has always been, has always shown up on our risk assessment, which is how we determine a lot of these things. But we have, because of controls in place and other competing priorities, have never done this before, and we feel like it's time to take a look and see. And we've talked a little bit with the Energy Resources Director Frank McCray and about what they're doing and what the future looks like for that. And we feel like there may be an opportunity now, even though eventually that process may look very different than it does today, we still want to make sure for the next several years it's operating efficiently and effectively. And another one we plan to look at is fire and medical transport services and billing, which, as you know, the fire department has engaged in multiple iterations and combinations of new services and models in these pilot programs they've run. But the most current and most recently implemented one is this transport service, and there's billing associated with that. So we want to see what that ultimately is looking like from the city's perspective. And last but not least...
Excuse me, Jennifer.
Sure.
Mr. Thompson.
I can wait until after you finish the last one, but I have a question on the purchasing.
Okay. Do you want me to? Okay.
Okay. So, on the purchasing, on the procurement process, what exactly are you looking at on that audit? Are you looking at the JOCs, CMARS? Are you looking at the overall cost, or how the contractors or the bid applicants are, you know, like, what are their cost overruns, or, you know, looking at total project costs? Because one of the things I hear a lot, especially with CMARS, is that there's an opportunity for contractors to really start hitting you with change orders that end up costing you or the citizens in this situation a lot more on a project than you would otherwise if you were just to go out to a typical RFP, low bid type project. So, are you looking at overall those type of things when you're talking about procurement and purchasing, or what exactly are you looking at?
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, that's a great question, and it's interesting. The focus that we had intended when we were going through our planning process, there's two basic buckets that you can throw procurement into. One is engineering, and the other is all of the other city procurement that goes on. So, our focus had intended to be the other side of things rather than the engineering side. So we're looking at RFPs that go out for various goods and services that the city procures. So, the focus would have been on those RFPs and what that process looks like to make sure that we're administering those fairly and procuring goods and services in accordance with laws, and also with our own policies and practices and direction of council. One of the reasons we do this today is to get your feedback and input on what you think is of value to look at. And so, if it would be your preference that we look at the construction-type contracts inside of, that's a slightly different audit than what we had planned, but it's not out of the question.
Well, I think it's important to do both, because you do have the one side, the vendor list, where you, you know, government's known to pay the, you know, $5,000 for the screw because you're the government. So I think it's important to audit and to check your procurement on the supply and supply side. But then there's another component, which is the construction side, the engineering side, which, you know, there sometimes can be a tendency to, I don't know, inflate costs, I guess, for lack of a better term, by contractors. And so, you know, we need to make sure that, from our perspective, that the citizens are getting the best paying for their buck, that, you know, what we're spending on projects and what we're paying our contractors are on par with, I guess, market rate. Does that make sense? So that we're not, we're not paying for that overinflated job. I mean, we talked about, I know we talked about ASU, you know, several weeks ago, and how it was going to, we're budgeting for $63 million, but we also have a $7 million override piece in there for potential up to $70 million. And $7 million difference is quite large. And so, if you start looking at that on a per-project basis, that sum can add up pretty significantly. So I just wanted to look at that to make sure that we're not being taken advantage of on the construction side as well.
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, I would like to, I really feel like I need to clarify if we do go in a direction like you're talking about. There is a limit to what my office can do in terms of looking at the types of things that you've mentioned. So what we can do is look at the what is versus what has been planned in terms of, did we comply with the contract? Have we paid what we said we were going to pay? Are we being billed accurately? As far as a market study for this cost of construction or, you know, comparison that way, when we start going down that road, that would require us to procure a subject matter expert to weigh in on that as more of a consulting arrangement. And so, it's not out of the question. It's just a little bit different than what my office tends to normally do.
Mayor and Council, I say market, when you say market rate, yeah, we pay more than market rate because of the requirements we have to go through, through the bidding processes with state law procurement processes. There's no doubt that our processes add more cost to a contractor, and so we try to keep those costs down. But I think, to Jennifer's perspective, we certainly, I think we could certainly, if that's where you want to go, if you want to go on the construction side versus the cost of goods and services, this purchasing is cost of goods, commodities, services. Engineering is contracting, construction. Those are very, those are two very different areas and processes. So I think Council would want to give Jennifer direction on which one of those to go through. But the construction side really is, as she said, and the auditor's done this before, has gone back and looked at large projects that have been under construction to determine whether or not the initial contract and what was delivered and was in compliance, did we keep the change orders within amount of reason, and so we've done that before.
Well, maybe perhaps what we'll do this time is just do the vendor and supply study, and then maybe next year, we add to the list that we also turn and do the construction and the engineering side.
Yeah. Jennifer, thank you so much. I was going to suggest that we might want to look at that next year, because I know that what you're doing right now is very cumbersome, and you have limited staff, and you still are trying to catch up with some past audits. So if we could maybe, maybe look at that next year as part of the Audit and Finance Committee, look at, looking at those issues as well.
We can certainly do that. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Jennifer, I don't think you finished this slide.
Yes.
Tell us what you were talking about with regard to the convention center.
The convention center is something we have looked at in the past. It's been a number of years. And this would be an audit to look at the overall operation in addition to the normal sort of financial in and out, how we're handling the money, but more to look at the efficiency and effectiveness of the entire operation. It's been suggested that we look at how the convention center is being used, how much utilization there is, that type of a thing, looking at some of the data and doing some analysis on what that's telling us as far as that operation goes. And so we would be reporting on that in addition to whether there were adequate controls in place for that operation.
Thank you. One point of clarification, I know we've talked about the police coming back and giving us maybe a 12-month evaluation of the jail situation. So I suspect that will happen, and that's different than your investigation or your report would be in addition to and separate from the internal police report.
Right. So Mayor, if you recall during the budget presentation, we gave you an update then. So that probably happened in April, I suspect. I don't remember when Petey was in front of you, but it's over April-ish probably. So, maybe in October, six months later, we could do, I'm just thinking maybe every six months. So we did one in April, maybe we could do six months later. But that would be different than, I think Jennifer's role is to kind of affirm that the cost savings or results are consistent.
Jennifer's the independent person that comes in separate from the police department and said, and gives us her evaluation. My recollection during the budget hearing was, you know what, let's use a 12-month, let's let it accumulate 12 months' worth of data, and that might be a fair time to then do some evaluation or draw some conclusions. But, so I know...
Earlier than April, or...
I think there's some lag in terms of when that data is available, so I think two or three months, September, October, would that be okay, Mayor? I think that'll hit. That should be close to our... I think that we're, yeah, this is still obviously a very, a topic that a lot of people in the public are curious to hear, you know, about. So I certainly endorse what Jennifer's suggesting, but it just reminded me that I'm curious to know when the police...
Yeah, and we can do that. And we know that the county costs have also risen since we've also issued a contract. So even our differences have continued to grow, so.
Jennifer, I think we interrupt to you, and you still have more to talk about.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to clarify on the police thing. One of the things that we do, we do affirm the information that you have been provided by the department. In general, the, one of the benefits is, in addition to the review being independent, is that we will look at everything across the board. And sometimes when we do that, we look at things that maybe the department isn't looking at. And so they may be reporting to you on certain key metrics that you're interested in. There may be other things to look at there as well that may be not on everyone's radar, and we can pick up on those. That's part of the benefit of, the audit process is very indiscriminate in terms of it wants to look at all of the requirements and make sure that everything is in order. One thing I will say about this particular contract and the department and their administration of it is that because it's been of such interest across the board, they have done an extraordinary amount of analysis and tracking of how that's going. And so when they do provide information to you, it's going to be pretty comprehensive. It's been, even in the few conversations that I've had with them about what they track and how they track it, it's going to be a pretty substantial effort, and you're going to get a lot of information from that. So I anticipate that they've done a lot of work for us, and we're not going to duplicate their work, but what we are going to do is look at it independently and objectively and decide whether it's the full story. So, those are the actual new and carryover audits that we plan to initiate during the 18, 19 fiscal year. We also have a number of follow-up reviews, as we do every year, of the previous year's activity. And those have been listed, you've received reports on those already. Those get presented to the Audit and Finance Committee and then posted on our website. And so, what we do is we come back generally a year from when the audit report is issued and do a follow-up review to determine whether the actions that the department committed to taking after the audit have actually been successfully implemented, which means not only did they do it, but it worked to resolve the underlying problem. And so we look at those two things, and as you can see from the slide, there are a couple that are requiring a second follow-up. These are ones that, one of which we would have anticipated, the other not so much, but we're working with the departments fairly closely at this point to make sure that things stay on track. And that would be the housing rehab program and the police off-duty program, both of which the departments did implement, the things that they said they were going to implement. Those things just didn't necessarily work out as well as they had hoped and didn't necessarily resolve the underlying issues, and therefore, we worked with them to make sure that additional steps were taken, and we'll come back and look at those. So, the other things that our office does, in addition to the audits and follow-ups, we do annually a PCI DSS, which is credit card security review, and we look at the operational side of credit card use and making sure that we're protecting our customers' information, which is very important. It's important to our customers. It's also important to our banking and merchant services providers. And so, IT handles the vast majority of the requirements of PCI, but we handle the forward, public-facing side. And so, the other thing we do, cash handling audits citywide on a continuous basis all year long to maintain a solid presence with all of the departments that handle cash so they know we're out there, and they can ask questions, we can establish relationships, we catch things early that way, and it works out pretty well. It's a good, not a whole lot of time involved, but we think that pays off in the long run. The other thing we are responsible for is the Fraud and Ethics Hotline. We have a third-party provider that takes reports into the hotline. They can, people can call in on the telephone, or they can report online. They go to speakupmesa.com, and they can tell us what their issue is, whether it has to do with city employees or contractors. And there's a variety of different things that they can report, and we have some detailed information on that on our website. We also provide monthly, we provide training to new employees at the New Employee Orientation so that they understand the presence of the hotline and what it's to be used for, what it's not to be used for, that type of thing, and try to maintain awareness. We also go, we have a booth at the annual employee benefits fair so that we can maintain that awareness among existing employees, who, some of which don't know that that exists until they come and say, "Oh, we have a hotline." So we tell them about it. It's very helpful. And our office basically takes those reports and then has a phased approach to looking at the investigation of those things. So initially, we're extremely cautious about investigations because it's important not to throw fire on a flame that doesn't belong there. In other words, if it's a frivolous accusation, if it's, if it doesn't have any basis, in fact, if there's no evidence, the investigation doesn't get much farther than an initial look, because we want to protect people from, you know, unsubstantiated allegations. And so, but when we find that there is evidence to continue, sufficient to continue, and we have sufficient predication to do that, we will do an investigation, will involve HR if necessary. If it's a very HR-centric type of an issue, we'll involve them even more. However, if they have already been involved in the issue, and one of the reasons the employee reports it to us is they're unsatisfied with that, we're also maintaining an awareness of what we need to do separately from HR to make sure it's adequately investigated. And so we do that and always report the, whenever anything is substantiated, we report those results on up to management to make sure that they're aware of it and can deal with it. And they report back to us as to what action they took to correct the problem. And so that, we don't get an enormous amount, thank goodness, of those types of things happening, but maybe in terms of substance, half a dozen a year turn into actual investigations. The rest tend to be dismissed fairly early on because of various reasons. The other things that we do, in addition to that, are what we lump together under consulting, which is a title that, in the audit profession, applies to all non-audit services. And so whether we've looked at something as a review, we recently did one for Gateway Airport, just to look at a single procurement that they did to make sure it was compliant. They wanted an independent look, we provided that. We've also provided financial statement reviews as part of a procurement process. For example, ITD sometimes wants to know what the sustainability of a particular proposed vendor is to see whether, are they going to be a going concern? Are they capable of providing the service? Do they have what it takes? Other departments, we've done that for transportation, I think those were the two biggies, a couple others, that we look at those. So we'll look at their financial statements and see how solvent that company is and whether they have the ability to perform. Sometimes that's not evident necessarily in their proposals. Any other minor projects, whether it's data analysis or help with development of internal controls for new processes and procedures, that type of thing, we try to be a resource when we can for those departments. And then unscheduled audits. The golf course is a good example of that. That was not on our audit plan last year, but kind of rose to the level of priority because of the timing of the contract situation and the fact that the department really needed some information in order to move forward with the new RFP, and so we're working on providing that. So those are the main things that we do and the things that we have planned for the fiscal 19 year. And so what we'd like to know is if there's, if you want to make changes or substitutions, deletions, that type of thing, let us know, and we'll bring that back. Otherwise, we're asking for your approval for the plan.
Thank you. I don't know that we need a motion to that effect, right? But just, I'll kick off by just saying thank you, Jennifer. You do a great job, you and your team. I think this whole Office of City Auditor was something that was put on the ballot by initiative from the public, and that's because the public wanted to have some confidence that the city was being self-examining and that we were self-critical and that we were making sure that we were being as frugal and as ethical as we could possibly be. And so that's the critical role that you play in our organization, and you do it very well. So thank you for being that person for each of us and for the public as well. And so, yeah, I'm very impressed with the work you have done and the presentation you made today. I don't have any, as you know, we meet frequently, and I appreciate those updates on the projects that you're working on, so I have nothing but thank yous for what you're doing. Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Jennifer. And I think, like the Vice Mayor indicated during the year, if we have any changes, we can work through the Audit and Finance Committee, and we can bring some things forward if something arises from the colleagues here. But otherwise, yeah, I'm all good with everything you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember.
I have a question. Is there a timeline of dates when these audits will be completed, or is there like a schedule?
We don't schedule them in advance. One of the reasons why you'll always see more audits on the plan than, I can tell you right now, not everything will be completed. One of the reasons for that is because I have a very small staff with individual auditors with very specific skill sets, and so we try to plan so that the projects can be assigned to the right person to do the job, since I can only put one auditor on a job. And so a lot of the timing will be impacted by the individual departments, what's going on in that department, whether it be with contracts, staffing, other programs and services. It all, it's kind of a fluid process. And so what we do is we just try to do the right thing at the right time, and so I can't tell you in advance specifically when things would be done. What we can do, however, is get feedback from, through the Audit and Finance Committee about what council's priorities are and the things that they're most interested in getting sooner rather than later.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments, Council? So, thank you, Jennifer. Did you get from us what you need?
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is item 3B. That's to hear a presentation and provide direction on the adoption of a comprehensive update to the city's sign code.
Good morning, Mayor.
Thank you.
Council.
Good to have you here.
Mayor and Council, glad to be here this morning. As Angelica gets things pulled up, I'll kick things off. We're excited to be here. We're at the home stretch, we believe, in getting the new sign code approved. It'll be on your June 2 meeting for introduction, and July, yeah, thank you. You didn't already do it in June? Oh, man. July 2 and July 9 then for action. We were back, we were here a few months ago, and since then, we've been making the final tweaks to the plan based on the comments we've received, and Angelica's going to go over those here in a little bit more detail in just a moment. But I'm going to take a moment for anybody who's watching and interested, just to kind of give the quick background history of how we got... of give the quick background history of how we got here and what's going on with this update to the sign ordinance. So, the city has had its existing sign code since the late '80s and would recognize the need to bring it up to date. We also had a court case, Supreme Court case Reed versus Town and Gilbert, that threw some wrinkles into how we look at signs. And so, we had to take those into consideration as we have been doing this. We can't base our signs on content anymore as we had in the past. Because that's been the particular challenge over the last year or so, as we've worked through this redo of the sign code to make sure we're meeting those requirements. And so, a particular interest has been the portable signs and how we address those because they were the most impacted. And also, some updates and changes to the permanent sign chapter. So, we released a public review draft of the code at the end of last year, and since then, we have gone through an extensive process of getting input on that draft code from various stakeholders and various advisory boards. And with those have looked at modifications to that draft code to make sure we're addressing as many of the concerns and needs of the community as possible. We've had a lot of neighborhood meetings and public meetings to get their input, again, as well as being here to the council and getting very valuable feedback from you. So, since we ended then, that technically ended that public input process at the end of March, but we'll continue to receive some input as we've gone through the hearing process with the P&amp;Z Board and even getting ready for the council meeting. So, we will continue to kind of tweak the ordinance and do have what we believe is a good ordinance that has gotten good acceptance by the community. We only had one person come to the P&amp;Z Board, and that was largely in support of the ordinance, a person from Arizona Sign Association. Still had a couple of suggestions for us that were very helpful with regard to a couple of topics, primarily with regard to illumination of signs, and so, taking those into consideration. So, again, we have this slide that shows the different people who have provided input to us along the way, and we've appreciated that very much. So, here we are, as I said before, with a sign ordinance that we're ready to recommend to council for approval. And Angelica's going to go through some of those things that came up through our review and what changes we determined to make and what changes we didn't make to that earlier draft.
Thank you, John. So, I will go over some of those changes in the next two slides, and then after that, I'll cover some of the comments that we received, but changes that we did not make, and I'll explain why. So, one of the changes that we did make from the draft that we released at the end of December to the final draft that you'll see, that will be before you for action, was with banners. We had originally released that with the allowance for banners for 45 days within a calendar year. They do not need to be consecutive. Based on the feedback and responses we received, we lowered that allowance to 30 days per year to be more aligned with what the existing code allowance is. In addition to that, window signs, we had initially released the draft indicating a 50% allowance, and then after doing, receiving comments and doing some research of what the surrounding communities allowed, we went ahead and reduced that down to 25%.
Sorry, is that primarily public safety related? For example, we're looking at the front window of a convenience store, and that's kind of the, I've heard this is an area of conflict for police enforcement and safe, public safety, safety.
Mayor, council members, it's for two reasons. One is, yes, to allow visibility into the stores for safety reasons. And the other, it's also just an aesthetic, that it helps reduce the amount of signs facing a street in front of a business, and it reduces clutter. So, it's both. In addition to that, we received the comments like John alluded to earlier about removing the illumination restrictions for static signs. We did go ahead and make that modification. We kept illumination restrictions for electronic message displays, and that's really where the concern lies from staff. And so, we agreed to remove those restrictions for static signs.
Can you tell me what restrictions were removed? For example, if I have a static sign in front of my business, then there's a timer on the electronic lighting. Was that regulated before, and it's not regulated now? Or what other, what are we talking about?
Mayor, council members, so with the existing code, we do not regulate that illumination if it's just a static sign. And so, going forward with the code as it is drafted now, we will not regulate that as well. We will regulate illumination on the electronic message displays where during, from dusk to dawn, we will require lower lighting levels. And then, in addition to that, there is a certain distance from residential. If there's an electronic message display that is located within 150 feet of a residential property, then they will have to either reduce that illumination or shut off illumination at night.
Mayor, we had proposed to put similar regulations on the static signs as we have for the changing electronic message signs, so it would require reductions of those lighting levels from certain hours. But as we investigated that further, we just found there wasn't any documentation in the industry about how you measure those levels or setting what those levels should be. And so, we couldn't really come up with good numbers to use. That's why we decided to back off and not do that. No other community does that that we could find. It's just the electronic message signs that are regulated and that work has been done for what those lighting levels should be.
So, I'm sure there's lots of situations I'm not thinking of, but the classic area for conflict here, I would think, would be a large sign that is in a close proximity to a residential neighborhood, and the residences don't appreciate having their, the inside of their house illuminated late at night and early in the morning. So, you're saying there would still be restrictions in that scenario where, within a certain limitation, 150 feet, I think you said?
Mayor, council members, no, the sign code will actually, as it's moving forward, will not have any of those restrictions for static signs. We do, however, do have existing illumination regulations within the building code that we're exploring with the building official to see how that can apply to signage, because it is an existing regulation that we have on lighting.
Regulation in that we're screening the amount of light that can fall onto a residential property from a business? Or can you flesh that out for me a little more?
Yes, Mayor, council members. The building code lighting regulations do have specific restrictions based on the type of illumination source, and they're very specific in indicating whether or not that light source needs to be shielded or not shielded. And it also has levels of illumination that can extend up to the property line and beyond the property line. And so, that can apply to illumination from a sign as well.
So, that's regulated through the building code as opposed to the sign code?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Well, you know, the, because I think I asked this question last time when you, when we were talking about this, but my concern to the Mayor's point is, you know, if you drive around the San 10202 over in Gilbert, there's an automotive sign that sticks out there. I mean, it's at night, I mean, you can see that thing like a beacon, I mean, you know, and it, and I've seen people, I had friends that lived on the other side of the freeway from them, and they're like, "Man, this thing lights up my entire house at night." And so, I want to get away from that, where, I mean, it's the same issue that we had in Councilmember Luna's area with the LED streetlights. You know, are we going to hear about this from citizens all of a sudden when a big light appears and we have to now scramble to try to figure out how we're going to enforce a dimming of the sign when we have nothing on our books to enforce a dimming of a sign?
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, I do believe that sign that you're referring to is an electronic message display. Is that correct? The one I think I'm picturing?
Yeah, I can't remember.
I believe it is, and if it is, we are proposing illumination restrictions for electronic message displays. It's only the static signs that we removed those restrictions for.
And Mayor and Council, there are a few of these things like this. Another one that Angelica's going to mention in a minute has to do with maybe some more creative ways to approach the sign area that can allow some more flexibility and creativity. Those are some good ideas that maybe do warrant further investigation, but we felt it was important to go ahead and get the sign code adopted because we need to get these new regulations in place, and we can come back and further investigate some of those things. Today, we're not regulating the static illuminated signs, so we have a lot out there that aren't and really only affect new ones. We can come back and look at that further, see if we can't find any information that we really feel like we can hang our hat on to justify those regulations.
Thank you.
So, the other additional modification that we did made, that we did make, was to allow air-activated signs and balloons on a temporary basis on properties based on their zoning district and based on, you know, we are proposing regulations that would limit the height and area of some of those signs, but they would be allowed on a temporary basis wherein the existing code, we had identified those items as prohibited, which carried over from the existing code. So, based on the comments we received from council, we did incorporate some of those changes as well.
Yes, Mr. Freeman.
So, what are you suggesting for, is there a timeline, calendar days?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, what we're proposing is to allow air-activated signs and the balloons similar to how we allow banner signs, that they would be allowed for up to 30 days within a calendar year for any business, and those days do not need to be consecutive. So, the applicant, or the business owner would need to come in and get a permit for the banner, so they would also, if they're having an air-activated sign or a balloon, obtain a permit for that, and they would need to let us know which days of the year they plan on displaying that so that we could indicate that information within their permit. Those permits are issued through our online permitting system, so they can be issued electronically as well.
So, just a question, as I drive around and I see both the banner and the air-activated signs and balloons being used, you can do both correctly, I guess, or one or the other? And then, how do, another question is enforcement, I guess, or compliance with this?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, the way that we have drafted the code, we have tables that are very specific to each zoning district, and that would indicate the number of temporary signs that they're allowed to have. Off the top of my head, I can't tell you, but I know we classified them similarly. So, in certain districts, the applicant would need to choose, "Am I going to have a banner? Am I going to have an air-activated sign? Or am I going to have a balloon?" But we have...
Some of the, some districts and larger properties, you could.
Yeah.
We also set a minimum setback from the curb. I forget what number we ended up with.
It's 50 feet.
30 feet from the curb.
And I guess, to follow up, he did ask about enforcement, because I know last time we talked about this, it was like, "Well, we're not really going to enforce it, so why are we going to put a time limit on it if, if our code enforcement folks aren't going to actively be forcing?" And here comes Christine. But if we're not going to actively enforce, I, how would we know that they say, "Okay, we're going to have them on these certain days," how do we know they don't extend beyond those certain days?
If I could answer that, Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, we did have that discussion. We heard you about that. And then, during our budget discussion for Development Services, four code officers were added. But the discussion on that was the service areas or their routes, their beats, if you will, will be smaller. Additionally, with our electronic system, our folks all have iPads now, so they can pull up and say, "When was that sign issued?" Having smaller areas, we think, is really going to increase the code officer's ability to manage their areas. You know, I can think of some apartments around town that have had open house banners up for two years. With smaller areas, the code officers are going to be much more familiar with the facilities in their area and will be able to be more proactive on enforcing signs.
So, if you know that there's been a banner on an apartment for open house for two years, how come it's still up there?
Mayor, council members.
duly noted, sir.
Correct. Mayor, Councilmember Thompson.
It was in Tempe, right?
It was in Tempe, yes. You know, and the reality is, and we talked about this, and I know it's very frustrating, is that signs, if they're not presenting a public safety hazard, are quite frankly a lower priority than life safety issues. And that has been the discussion, that we simply haven't had the resources to deal with those kinds of things. With the additional code officers, we think that we'll be able to do a better job.
We have resources, it's a matter of priority.
Yes.
If it becomes the priority over other code issues, I mean, we could hire 100 more officers, but it's just a matter of prioritization. And so, we would, I think we can address this. I think what will happen is once this code is adopted by the council, it'll give us an opportunity, maybe for a period of time, to be much more, you know, active in that enforcement and in education so that people recognize things have changed and what the new code is. And I think sometimes it's just that education. People aren't necessarily doing it because they knowingly are violating some code. They're just, you know, it's probably the apartment manager who is just trying to fill up some more spaces. So, we can work on that. We'll prioritize the ones, though, that we think are the most egregious that create some kind of specific nuisance to the adjacent property owners or residents, that's usually where we focus on, or complaint basis. You know, if we don't get a complaint, and it's not creating a nuisance, it's not creating a hazard, it may be a while before we spend some time to go and deal with a banner that's hanging off of a balcony somewhere.
One of the other modifications that we did make, based on some of the comments that we have received, was to discourage the use of raceways. The way that we have addressed that, because we had initially in the draft indicated or provided that as a standard, that we were going to discourage the use of raceways, and that's really, as a standard, it's probably not the most appropriate place to have it. So, what we have done is moved it into our Guidelines section of the sign code and...
I'm sorry, Angelica, can you could, I might be the only one in the room who doesn't know what a raceway is.
Yes, so if you look at the picture over on the right-hand side that reads liquor, you see the little red arrows pointing to this piece of material that's, the letters are attached to, that is a signed raceway. So, a lot of business owners will purchase a sign, they'll do individual letters such as these green liquor letters, and then they'll attach them to a raceway. What the raceway allows the business owner to do is to have less penetrations going through the wall of their building, because they'll attach that raceway, and then each individual letter is attached to the raceway, reducing the number of penetrations for the anchors to go through the wall. And so, what, but aesthetically, it's not the best aesthetic. So, what we're encouraging by providing pictures within the sign code is of much better solutions. And so, in our opinion, the use of a raceway that is incorporated into the background material of a sign, such as this example that I have here in this picture with Seattle Sun Tan, or, you know, I've got, have the arrow pointing at the raceway, or in the picture next to it with the Legion Games, same thing. What they did within this sign is provided, you know, a logo, but then also individual letters above the raceway, but it's all attached through the raceway. Down below, in the singular wireless sign example, they provided a splash cabinet type of a raceway and then just mounted the letters to it, but it's more free-form in shape following the shape of the individual letters. And then, over with the coach example on the right-hand side, same thing, I've got the arrow pointing to the raceway there. The letters are attached to the top, but there's also some sign area on the front of that raceway. So, what they have done with these four pictures at the bottom is really encourage much better design and incorporate it into the design. Aesthetically, it looks a lot more, you know, a lot better. And so, that's what we want to encourage. So, what we have done is, in the final draft, provided some of these examples, but also provided a design guideline to discourage the use of raceways. So, some of the modifications or comments that we received, but we were not able to incorporate modifications, are to the maximum sign area allowance. In some zoning districts, we did increase the maximum area and height of signs, but that's for freestanding signs. When it came specifically to attach signs, we did not increase that. We still have the allowance of a special use permit to allow a comprehensive sign plan. If an applicant wants to come in and do something that the zoning code or the sign code doesn't allow, we'll still have that flexibility through the process to take into consideration special and unique situations. In addition to that, we had also received a comment about how we measure sign area. Currently, we measure it with two geometric shapes that touch on one side. One of the comments that we had received was to allow the use of multiple geometric shapes, more than two. We really were not comfortable moving forward with that type of a change because we have done our analysis on the comprehensive sign plans that have been approved in the last 10 years. And to now change and provide a different area of measurement, we feel that it would skew the proposal that we have because all of our area measurements were based on the use of two geometric shapes that are tangent. So, we did not incorporate that change. In addition to that, we also received a comment, and although we do agree with this one, to take a look at the ratio of design of freestanding signs, and I have an example here with the Title Loans CheckSmart, where the width to height is really four to one. Our code currently proposes a maximum of two to one ratio, and this is one of those items that, because we're trying to get this project in front of you and get it, get the updated ordinance approved to address some of the issues with the Gilbert case, we didn't have time to really study and work with our Design Review Board on what the appropriate ratio should be, that we want to be able to take the appropriate time to study that after this code is adopted and really come back when we're ready with a concrete proposal that we're comfortable with. a concrete proposal that we're comfortable with. In addition to that, we had received some comments on, for the historic sign chapter that we are proposing. But those comments were really content-based changes that we really cannot incorporate, because we'd be in violation of the Gilbert case. And so, we are moving forward with a proposal that incorporates the designation for historic signs, but just not incorporating the comments that we received that would then be in violation of that Gilbert case. In addition to that, we also received comments pertaining to murals, because we are proposing to allow murals citywide. And some of the comments that we received were concerns about allowing murals in residential districts. But then, we also received comments from other members of our community with concerns about just allowing murals in commercial districts. And so, the comments that we received were really conflicting. And so, we're moving forward with our original proposal to just allow murals citywide.
I have a question on murals. And so, I know the Gilbert Supreme Court case says you can't regulate content. So, whatever it is, it is, and we don't get involved in that. But if, and murals, I think, we have, we like murals. We see that as adding character, and it's generally, we want to encourage it. But if, let's say, instead of having, you know, surf and ski, instead of having this cool shark, if it was a Target store and they decided just to put the Target logo on the entire side of the building, would the Gilbert Supreme Court case say, sorry, that's a mural, and you can't regulate it as a sign? Or, I mean, how do we, how do we define what a mural is, and what a sign is?
Yeah. Mayor, council members, so what we have done is removed, because the existing code had a restriction on murals, only allowed them in the downtown area, we have removed that language from the proposal that we have moving forward. But what we have also indicated within the definition of the mural is that if there is any sign copy on the mural, then the sign copy would be counted against the allowable sign area. And so, if it's really a sign that's painted on the building, then the sign would be counted against the allowable area, which, it doesn't mean that it's not allowed. It could still be allowed. It would just be considered towards the allowable sign area for that building.
So, if it contains copy, it's a sign. If it doesn't, it's a mural?
Mayor, that portion that contains the copy would be counted, but the rest of it would be fine.
Interesting. Okay, it seems sufficiently ambiguous that we're going to have interesting discussions going forward. But I guess, things aren't always neat and clean, are they? All right. Thank you. Right.
Thank you. So, we did release the final draft in April, and we provided hard copies at each of the libraries. We also posted the draft on the city's webpage. And we have continued to answer questions. We still continue to get emails and phone calls with a lot of questions about what the proposed code will allow, will not allow, how will it affect certain properties. And so, we've continued to address those. We're also moving forward proposing a 30-day effective date after council approval. So, our staff recommendation is for approval of the sign code update. And we have placed it on your agenda for a July 2 introduction and then a July 9 action, like I said, with the ordinance taking effect 30 days later. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Angelica. I remember hearing this when I was on the Board of Adjustment with Mr. Sheffield. And I can't remember how many years ago that was, but it's been a while. So, I appreciate your delivery of the sign update. So, I appreciate all the work that's gone into it. It's been years in the progress. So, I'm anxious to adopt this as far as the council will move forward. And I like the flexibility Mr. Wesley has talked about, that allows you to move forward and address some of the other concerns, because you haven't been able to get to all of it. But I think it's imperative that we get this on the table for businesses and all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I agree. Yeah, I look forward to having it on our agenda.
Is there a question? Is there any other proactive outreach that we're doing, sending it to folks that work with small businesses, associations, and beginning like East Valley, Hispanic, you know, Chamber, Mesa Chambers, Downtown Mesa Association, folks that work with small businesses? Also, do we collect any information, contact information, like emails when people submit for sign permits? Can we share that information, or at least a link back to the final sign code?
Mayor, council member, Edia, we identified stakeholders early on in the project and went through the process of notifying them and providing them copies of the draft. As we started working, we took their feedback to try and identify what the issues were that they had with our existing sign code in order to move forward with incorporation of those comments and concerns that they had early on in the project. We have continued to do email blasts to those people that were identified. In addition to that, like you indicated, anybody who has applied for a sign permit or has been in contact with our office, even if they weren't necessarily a sign company, any architecture firm, engineering firm, I actually did do several email blasts to anybody who was in our system and has identified, you know, through their email addresses. We provided that information and a link back to our website that provided the webpage for this project, and also a link to the drafts that we have been working on. In addition to that, we also included emails to firms that have signed up with our Development Advisory Forum, and also provided email blasts to them.
And Mayor and council members, we will follow up now that, I think, once the sign code is adopted, to make sure they're aware that it has been adopted with links to the final draft, so they can become educated in what the changes are.
Thank you.
And one additional comment, if I can add. Once we know that this is the final version, I'm going to start working on some training materials, handouts for staff, so that we can also update the website and provide a lot of those guides and information for our residents, business owners, sign companies, and staff as well.
One more question. Grandfathering, prior businesses, are they grandfathered into this? Are we just moving forward with new businesses, just for my own brain?
Mayor, council member Freeman, we have added some language within the code that any existing signs and any existing comprehensive sign plans that are approved are grandfathered in and can remain. If a business owner chooses to update their sign, then they would need to do that in conformance with the new code once it's adopted and effective.
Okay, so there are non-conforming signs out in the city, but they're grandfathered in unless or until they do something that triggers the new code.
Correct.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? I have one final important question. Mr. Wesley, when is your last day of work at the City of Mason?
Mayor, council member, I'll be here through the end of the year.
Through the end of the year, okay. Great. I just didn't want to let the opportunity, you know, come and go for us to, to pat you on the back. So, we'll wait to do that. We don't want to administer any praise unless it's absolutely necessary.
That would, that would be good. You're right.
Thank you very much. But great job. We'll look forward to working on this on the 2nd of July. Next item on our agenda is item 4, to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Council, hearing none. Mr. Brady, can you help us with the schedule for future meetings?
Yes, Mayor and Council, our next meeting will be a study session a week from today, so that would be June 25. We'll see you then.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.